Let's cycle back to the top to see what we want our next steps to be if we want to do some additional discussion on things, or if we're ready to start to turn things loose to the committee. Going back to vacancies. We've had a little bit of time to possibly think about the vacancies as we were going through other items. I'd ask, or I'd bring up two additional items that have been somewhat clarified is, the idea with what's been presented here would be asking for a full term. We wouldn't be looking for a partial term. David, did you mean for it to go back to that screen?
No, I'm sorry. He'll bring it back.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah, he'll bring the other screen back.
All right. That we are clarifying that we'd be, if we move forward with this one, we're looking at people that ran for the full term, not a partial term. That we'd want to make sure they're still qualified, that there hasn't been anything that's happened that would either, well, for sure unqualify them, have they moved out of the district, has there been a felony, something else. What I would also say is if we want to move forward with this, I would say that they need to have gotten some percentage of the vote. So if you're in a situation where somebody gets just 5% of a vote, yes, the people spoke, but they, that's not a lot. Now, all I did was look back at the last two board elections. The people that got elected were north of 20% in the last election. And I want to say the previous election, now I'm starting to doubt myself, I don't think it was 20% because you had a lot of people running. I think 12% might have been the number on that one. I don't know what the answer is, but I do think we'd at least want to say that you had to have done so well before you're given this option. Trustee Patlischkov?
I'm not interested in changing it to going to the, I think that's negating our obligation, that the state has put, resided in us, we are to fill the appointment, it's what Michigan election law is. And I'm not interested in letting it go to the variable of the most recent election depending on. So I don't care what, I'm just not interested in that change.
You wouldn't have any problem with us electing the person if they were the next highest vote getter? But you would want to-
As, as, as a, yeah, as part of-
But you wouldn't want it to automatically happen?
Automatically, that's correct.
Okay. Additional comments on this?
I think I've heard enough where it needs to go back to committee.
All right.
What I was hearing you say, I wasn't hearing you say that's what you want to change, I was hearing you say if we're going to change, you were bringing up maybe giving us something to think about.
Yes.
Okay, I get that, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Any additional comments on this one before we move to the next?
Wait, hold on. So is this, is this one coming back to committee?
This one then would go back to the committee to see if the committee is able to come up with anything that a majority of the board would support to change the policy.
Well, should we just take a temperature now of the majority of the board to see if the majority wants us to revise this?
Well, that's where I was kind of looking around to see where people are at. We have, we have heard one person definitely say what their feeling is.
Okay.
Others seem to be open to sending it back to policy to work on this. That was how I interpreted it.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
If I am incorrect, speak now.
I just think that maybe this is a good time since we're all here and we're kind of wanting to, the policy committee needs to have kind of an idea of where the board is heading.
Right.
So I think it might be a good idea just to take a temperature of everyone, whether they're leaning in one direction or the other, whether they're leaning to have it the way that we've done it in the past, in the process of the board electing someone to fill a vacancy, or to look at a different way of doing it.
But what I don't want us to do is then start to spend a lot of time just stuck on this one, working through each item at this point.
Okay.
But I have no problem with this kind of taking the temperature, so to speak, as to what they want to see.
Right, because I mean, my, my point is that we have all seven of us here together. If the committee isn't really sure where the board's falling individually, how can we move forward without a direction or an idea of where the board's sitting? That's my question.
Yeah, so I can open with the idea that what trustee Mosef, I think, was getting at with this one, and what trustee Berry has stated is, if we went forward and we said, all right, we're going to give kind of first crack at the next highest vote getter, it saves us a lot of headache from going through the process. It also saves us from a perception or a reality that there's forces working on us to try to get us to vote a certain way. But I would also then state that on the other side, there's a chance that the next highest vote getter might be a person that you might just think they are not well-suited for the role.
Who decides that, Jim? Who makes that decision? I mean, if they receive 15, 18% of the voters, why do we, why do we-
If they receive that in a regular election, it's the voters. But the way this is written is then currently it goes to us to decide if there's the vacancy.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I was commenting on what you said. So if the next highest, let's say I resign in April, and you go back to the next highest vote getter, he or she still lives in Dearborn, check, still interested in the job, check, but the board doesn't feel like they're a good fit.
No, they have the opportunity to come before the board and apply along with anybody else.
That's not what we're saying. We're saying if we're going to change it, if we're going to change it, he's given, you want to repeat what you just said?
You're both moving along the same tracks, I think. So what, what it would really start to look like is how we were talking about the election of officers, is maybe this needs guidelines.
Okay.
And one of the guidelines could be that we, we don't give, we're not favoring a person that's already gone through the process of asking to be elected, but it can be something that we're, that could be our interest.
Incorporated one of the points. But we, I think we, as a board, have done that in the past during appointment processes anyhow, when you make your selection. Now, I, I'm just saying, I'm not in for the automatic, you know.
And you feel like the last two times worked fine for us?
I'm not, you know what? It's, it's my obligation, and I understand that, to make the decisions. Am I crazy about it? No, it, it, it's, and I've been through it, I think, four times now. But I still think it's the, the most honest representation. The person who ran has the opportunity to apply, and so do other people. And then we, as the duly elected people, because the next person who got, wasn't elected, we were. And I think that's why the state election laws put it that way, that we then make the decision, because that next highest vote getter did not pass that threshold the first time around. The people who were sitting at the table are the ones who were elected. So I think it's, and, and the state has decided that we are the ones to make that decision.
Just a little bit of leeway here. And I don't want to go backwards and mention names, but we had a person, she's here, I can mention her name, I won't mention people's names, aren't here, applied for that appointment, served on the board, served in leadership, has done all that. I mean, to me, it should have been an easy decision, but we went in a different direction and it didn't.
But it was a board majority vote, and unfortunately, that's how a board works. So regardless of whether I felt, and, and I wasn't happy with some of the decisions that came out, but I still had to, we still have to accept a board majority vote as, as the deciding factor. And that's what the state constitution says.
And I guess just to retweet, you don't have to answer the question, I'm just putting it out there. And what did that do to the board, and how did it serve the district? I'm just, that's important to me, I'm sorry, but that's important to me.
There's no end to-
Right.
Yeah, you're right, no, it's fine, it's fine.
Can discuss on this one. So trustee McDonald?
Just a couple of things I want to say. As a board member, I pride myself in not being pressured from outside sources. The decision that I make, and any decision I make, is what I feel is best for the community, for the district. So I just want to get that out there. But another thing, this is just a scenario. Say you have a previous election, and it was the last election, and you had two seats available, and you had three people that won. Well, the two people that got, I mean, I'm sorry, three people that ran, two people that got elected, say they had really overwhelming election results, people really wanted them. The third person may be someone who has an agenda, and I'm just, some people may have an idea of what I'm speaking of, that wants to use this board as a platform, it's happened in the past, that, to just have divisions and maybe push an agenda of division, and maybe hatred, hate, and say they only got 3% of the vote, but if two people were elected, there are only three people that ran, that person would be automatically moved-
And that's, that's where I said that, that at least within some type of floor of how much of the vote they would get. Trustee Watts?
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm calling up people when they take drinks.
I would say, I, I'm trying to gather feedback here and, and to move things along, and I want to hear from everybody. But I think, here's the other thing that we need to think about, just because we don't have to tackle this right now. I guess that's the other thing. Some of these things we can say, let's think about, or let's continue the discussion. So just because we don't resolve it right now and say we give it to policy, doesn't preclude us from going to policy in six months. So that's number one. So we don't have to solve everything here right now. However, number two, to know that, I think we need to get, again, we need to get a temperature of where everyone currently stands. On do we want to keep it as is, or do we want to send it to policy with some suggestions?
Would you be adding anything to that, or?
The percentage number I have a problem with, because like I said, each election cycle has different number of people voting. If you have an election cycle where you have 8,000 votes and a percentage of 10%, that's 800 votes would put that person into the seat.
Right.
And an election prior to that, they had 20,000, 30,000 votes, that 10% would be much higher. And that person would, would have been the next highest vote getter, with, with a larger majority of the community weighing in at that point in time. That's why I'm saying this doesn't work for me. I think it, it's too, there's too many variables, because the election cycles are not the same. There's too, too much variance in them on their own. How many people are running, who they're running against, all those things play into, and what's on the ballot at that time period. And you never know when you're going to have a vacancy, so you don't know what election you're going to be looking at as the last, most recent election. I just find it too problematic.
So-
One sentence addition to what she's saying, nonstop. I kind of agree with trustee Watt that maybe he doesn't have to go to committee right now, but instead of use the word percentage, maybe use the word gap between the person elected and the person not elected, referring to what trustee McDonald was saying, if it was like two people way ahead, but too big of a gap. Okay, I just wanted to throw out there, I'm good.
No, appreciate it. The, what I'm, what I'm kind of sensing is this is another one where we could come up with guidelines of what the board might be looking for. And having run for a previous, in a previous election, especially the most recent election, might be something that we would consider when we're individually thinking about the election of the upcoming person. Is, is that we kind of come up with some guidelines, because we, we talked about this one for years, and you're right, trustee Watts, but this is a time bomb that we don't know when it's going to blow up again. And the taste in our mouths from the last time was not good, but I don't know that we could come up with a better process. Some of us might feel that one thing is better than another, but this is, this is going to be a continuing item, I, I feel. So I, I think maybe this is one where you start coming up with guidelines, and try to think that these are the things that maybe as an individual, or hopefully as a board, we can get behind and say, these things we think are important for a person who's running for board service. Anything additional before we move on to the next item? All right. I don't know that there was anything else for compensation. We had talked about the idea of getting some information of tying, I'm sorry, not tying, seeing what other districts are doing in terms of compensation, other, we want to stick with school districts. We don't want to know about other elected boards, correct? Even though we might have pegged this years ago to our city council. Anything additional on the compensation? We didn't bring it up, but I don't know if anyone had any items regarding the further down where it talks about the ability to attend conferences and things like that.
We do have a bylaw for that.
Well, there was something further in, in the compensation bylaw that talked about being able to get reimbursed for attending-
No, that's-
For attending, I think there was something in the bylaw about attending community events that you would be reimbursed for that, is that what you're referring to?
Yep, reimbursed for reasonable charges, well, not that one specifically. Not just for like that one, but yeah, it's, no one's got any issue except for the overall dollar amount compensation. Correct? To be encouraged to go to other, to go to trainings, to go to conferences, and be reimbursed for any cost that we incur, everyone's good with that one.
David, they're going to get us in trouble with time, so they start spending more money.
I didn't say that. Well, the unwritten rule had always kind of been, try to only go to one a year for each.
No, I think that's part of the, we have it where if you've been, we, we changed that in my first term, because we had some people who were going over and over again repeatedly, and nobody else was going. So after you go, you have to get board president approval, and everybody has to have a shot at going to one conference. You can't keep going consecutively, one, the same person. And, and then after that, then the board president can say, it's in our bylaw.
And there's something in there that says, and if it's the board president, I want to say it goes back to the secretary.
Yeah.
There, there's something in there so that everyone's on equal footing.
I think it was also a guideline that it could be one national and one, one state. So that was two a year, generally speaking.
Right.
But also, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought.
You want us to move on, when it gets back on track?
Okay.
All right. Elections.
Oh, that was it, just that you have to report out, no, you have to report out, you're supposed to, because we had an issue with that. People going to conventions and not actually going to-
Sharing the information.
So share your information to-
And, and we've got it set that it's supposed to be a presentation at a board meeting. Would we want to keep it that way, or just provide the information that was gathered to the board? Do we, do we want it to actually have to get up and do a presentation, or just share knowledge? Give it some thought, maybe, trustee Watts?
I prefer just having, if you guys have handouts to share that, I think that's more meaningful for myself, instead of giving a presentation. So if you're attending those conferences and there's handouts, I would rather share it with all of you, and if you have questions, then I would have that conversation. But I think presenting it during the board, it just, I think there's too many moving parts, and sometimes it doesn't get its due diligence or due conversation.
Attention.
Yes.
We, we could also put it into either board member commentary or the committee report. Even though it's not a committee, we could just have it at some point at the end of the meeting that you kind of report out as to what you got from it.
I think pretty much what trustee Watt's been doing under commentaries, report that she just attended.
Okay.
The ones that I've, so the one, the one that I attended, I believe last year, when I attended it, I had their handouts, and then I took notes underneath, and I shared that with everybody as well, on top of just reporting it out. That's, that worked for me, just so that-
If I'm interested in more information, I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, exactly, and that's what I was thinking as well.
Okay, so that might be then a change to that, that's bylaw?
That's bylaw.
That would be a bylaw?
Anything to deal with the board.
Yeah, 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 I know, I know, I said that after, I thought it after I said it. So we would remove that we have to give a formal presentation.
So what I'm hearing is change the verbiage from formal presentation to just reporting it out during board member common-
Report out at a board meeting. We don't, I don't know that we have to say in a certain spot.
No, you don't.
And provide information to any, yeah, share the information, and yeah, provide the information to any of the other trustees. Okay.
Make available any.
Election, and this will be our last item then. Give me a second, I had closed it down, will you reopen it? So what it seemed to be when we were ending the conversation was the idea that we come up with guidelines of these are the things that we'd want to see. And this is really specific to the president rule. These are the things that we'd want to see. However, would we want to put it into a bylaw? Because then it starts to give us less leeway, one way or another. And one thought that I would have is then, if, if you're doing all of these things, and we haven't put anything, or made any change to the bylaw, then who's to say that, that someone else that might not have done these things can't have their name brought forward and be elected?
They can, but they won't get the vote.
That's not true.
It's, it's not necessarily true. We're, we're saying in guidelines that we want to see these things, right? We're not saying that we're requiring-
They're suggestions, perhaps.
Yeah.
They're suggestions.
Right.
So would we want to put some type of thing into the bylaw so that it, it does strengthen that, that item that, you can't have one person that's done everything and one person that's done nothing, and then just because everyone likes that one person, they get elected. I mean, you could, but it's the choice of the-
Then that can be something policy committee can look at how they can reinforce that particular aspect.
How do you do that? Wow. You'd literally have to, that's a lot of pressure on you, buddy.
No, you're on the policy committee. He's just the one that writes the words.
He's going to be doing the writing. Honestly, how do you, how do you, I mean, okay, I, I get elected to the board, and I'm one of those guys that just gets along with everybody. Jim's going to love me, Mary's going to love me, Pat's going, everybody's going to love me. I'd go check off all these things right here, then, you know, two years from now, I want to run for president. You nominate me, you support, and I'm a very popular guy, it can't happen, right?
Well, there, there are boards, they've got the same presidents, Brian Wiston was president of his board for 11 years. I mean, you know, there are-
And we have a nearby board, that's the way they do it, and every year, they destroy each other. Every year, they destroy each other, and people that have been getting along-
What board is one way, another board is, I don't think Brian's-
That's why I, that's why in the beginning of my conversation, I said, I want to set this up, I don't know how long I'm still going to be around here, but I want to set this up where future boards have a chance to work together. Not get along and everything, but at least to get, to work together. If it's the vacancies, if it's, you know, the elections, it's, whatever it is, there's no reason for that to happen what happened a couple, six, seven weeks ago. It just shouldn't happen. And if we start saying, oh, that's not going to happen, verily, that might happen, that might, everything's possible.
Two items that I would add would be the idea that in, I'll say, at least November, anyone interested in running for the presidency should be asked to announce it to the rest of the board. So that they have some time to campaign or talk to other board members, and that that way we know ahead of time, these are the people, and we've got a chance to talk to each other. How would people feel about something like that?
Well, that is what the options have always been.
But it hasn't been done. So if, if we put something in a bylaw that said anyone-
That you're required to announce you're interested?
In a certain period of time leading up to meeting?
And then you, you are going to have to have the conversations then with every board member about why you think you-
And isn't that what we want?
And that's what we want. And then, and then each board member should be encouraged to respond back, yea or nay, just as what Jay Bennett said at the study session, so that you have a clear understanding. I said it over and over again, that all the times I was on the board, and Roxanne had the same experience, when I was told you can nominate yourself, but you're not going to get the votes, I understood what that meant. And I said, okay, I'm not going to nominate myself. Roxanne withdrew her name from nomination, because she understood that it, she wasn't going to be supported with the votes from the rest of the board. We understood what that meant, that the bylaw, the bylaw was working not in our favor, but that it, you know, you nominate and you get the vote. You either know you're going to get the vote or not. And actually, at the study session, Jay said, you don't want to go forward and put your name out there and know that you're not going to have the votes.
That's why I'm saying that if, if you were interested in the role, you have to let people know that a couple of months ahead of time, so there's time to talk to other board members.
And build a relationship that would encourage the vote.
So just like vacancies, just like everything else, we're just going to keep everything political. That saddens me.
I don't know how announcing that you're interested in the role-
Not that part, we're just, we're having this discussion at this level, in a public meeting, and most of us have already assumed that we're going to change what we've been doing. Right? Am I wrong?
Most of us assumed, why, why would you make that statement? How can you assume that everybody thought we were going to change what we were doing?
I can, I'm sorry.
What, what he's, I think, referring to is our past practice had been to do a rotation.
It was just a gentleman's agreement, it was not, and I talked to several former board members who said, that's why we always had an agenda that you nominated and you voted, and they, they never changed the bylaws for that very reason.
And I don't mean to put words in your mouth.
No, no, let me clarify what I was saying. That's exactly what I'm saying. Yes, it was a gentleman agreement, but if it worked, that could be an option that we can, that comes out of-
And I, and I've already said I don't support that.
All right, never mind.
I just want to add something. Part of the thing that I think is problematic about the rotation system is because not everybody on the board necessarily wants to go into the rotation system. I might be perfectly happy just being a trustee, and I don't want to take on a leadership role. The next board member that gets elected might not be at all interested in the board leadership role, but wants to serve as a board member. So I think that that is problematic in that way as well.
Show a veto passed, I mean, you can pass, as a, you can say, I don't want to serve in the office position. I just got elected to serve on this board, that's all I want to do. I don't want to go to, I don't want to go to events, I don't want to go anywhere. I'm just going to show up here once a month, that's all I'm obligated to do. I think that's all he did. You can, you can do that, that doesn't change anything. But what I, what I keep hearing, every time we get into discussion, somebody yells real loud that I have no interest. Is that coded? What does that mean? What does that mean? I have no interest, that's why we're here. We, you know where I stand on most things, and I know where you stand, and we're having a discussion. I can't keep talking, let's keep it the same, or let's change this. We're here to have a discussion.
If we're taking a temperature, I'm, I'm letting it be known how I feel about certain changes.
What started this discussion, as I told the chair, is you're, you're getting a little ahead of yourself here. You're just assuming that the recommendation from the committees and they come in and say, hey, we're changing the way you've done it, which probably is going to be, but doesn't have to be that way. We're discussing things that maybe, maybe, maybe six, seven months from now, we should be discussing.
Right. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I started saying, and-
Well, that's why I was confused by you said, you assumed that there was going to be changes, and I was, I wouldn't make assumptions.
He's assuming.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood what you were-
What he was saying, if we do it this way, and this and that, then he's assuming there's going to be changes.
I thought you were saying it, I'm sorry, I apologize, I misunderstood.
Anything additional on this one? So are we at a point where this one then is, does the committee feel comfortable with where the board is at, and what the next steps being requested are? Or does the, do the committee members want a little bit more information from us? Trustee Watts?
So I wrote down, are we looking through, I wrote down notes for each bylaw and comments and policies. Are we done with all of that, so I can then make sure what I have written is, is what was-
You want to summarize?
Yes, thank you, to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding.
Is there anything else that we'd add before we do a summary? Then if you want to go ahead with it?
Okay, so then from the beginning, for bylaw 0142.5 for vacancies, I have on here that there was mention about adding guidelines, but there was nothing specific to the guidelines. So there's, there was discussion about perhaps adding guidelines, then what? And nothing specific as to what those guidelines would be.
What was presented in the beginning-
There is a proposal.
There is a proposal.
So that could go into as a potential guideline.
So the verbiage that was added to the guidelines to make consideration.
Mr. Mustin.
I think we have to be careful about guidelines for bylaws. I, I would have to check to see. We, I, we don't have guidelines for bylaws.
It's, yeah, it's correct. It's an operating manual. That's where it would be all placed.
Right. And, and I don't know of one that is officially has been adopted by this board. An operating.
No, we don't have an operating manual.
Right. So if you're suggesting that our next steps would be to create an operating manual and then put this information into it, I'm all on board. Let's do it. But if the next steps is that we're going to follow an operating manual or put stuff, you know, we don't have one yet. So just be aware that whatever we're suggesting would have to be, it's, we're actually creating something new. Um, we have a framework that was shared with the board and I think the board was kind of on board with that framework. Um, so we have a place to start. We're good with that. I'm good with that. But, um, I just want to put some realistic expectations for timelines and getting something like that put together.
So it might just be the terminology where you're using where it wasn't correct.
That, that, that's all. And I.
That's why we have a lawyer in the room. I guess my question to you is, when I volunteer for policy, why didn't you warn me?
You said you wanted to be on policy?
We're going to have a cheat sheet for all of the vernacular that goes with policy and bylaws and everything else. Because I think that was the meeting in itself of just trying to explain the differences between all of those words. So my understanding from vacancies is that within the operating manual, that does not exist, that the verbiage would be to make, that a consideration for a vacancy would in, would incorporate whether a person was in the previous election and was the next vote getter.
Next highest vote getter.
So that would be one of the considerations.
That would be one of the considerations.
All right.
In an operations manual with the board having the ability to consider adding additional items.
And do we want to just do it with the previous election or with any previous election?
Well, that's the other thing. Is it just the last one or the last, within the last 10?
I, I would think you'd go back to the most, the previous election and again, the full term, not a partial term.
So what if we, for instance, had 20 people apply? And five of the 20 were in the last 10, they ran in the last 10 election, or the last 10 years within an election?
That's.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So that's where.
Then how do you prioritize?
We're going down a rabbit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying. So perhaps it.
I, I will say that every time we have an appointment, um, for a vacancy, we as a board would put together what we were looking for in an applicant for ourselves to use. So, um, I mean, I'm not sure whether a guideline.
I don't recall doing that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Okay. I just know that we have to make sure we're asking the same questions for everybody.
We get guidance from ASB for that.
I mean, the solution would that nobody steps down and we didn't have to fill it.
Or moves.
You can't die either.
Or die when they're in office.
But trustee Petch, say that again, what, what we're.
When, when we had, when we went into a vacancy application process, the board would also come up with what they, with what we jointly felt were important points.
So could we add?
And that's how we developed the questions.
Though if, if we, we, there's one that says we couldn't make that into the, put that in the manual. Like, these are the things that we think are important.
Do we have previous questions from vacancies that we could add to the operating manual for vacancies?
Probably, yeah. I probably have them.
So would everyone be okay if we use?
How do those serve us?
The problem with that too is just, I mean, things change, but you also have, um, if those questions are out there and they're the same one used year after year after year after year, you're going to get canned answers.
Yeah.
Canned answers. So, and you want to kind of tailor it to what's going on currently. That's my thoughts.
I mean, some of them always were going to be.
Canned answers.
Do you, what do you know about Henry Ford College? Because that was, you know, a, a big, you know, that kind of stuff. But so some of them are always going to be the same and some of them will be, yeah, different.
All right, are we clear as mud on this?
Yep. Okay, well, that one's, the next one was, uh, compensation 0144.1. Um, Mr. Mustin was going to seek additional information from other districts and get back to, um, the board with that.
David, I'll take a look too, because I think I might have something recent.
Thank you.
Um, and then in terms of, and I don't have the, uh, the number in front of me, but for those who would be, uh, attending conferences, that we would change the verbiage that instead of doing a presentation, they would do a report out during the meeting and then they share the information or make their information available to trustees.
That sounds about right.
Okay. And then, uh, under the, I'm going to go quickly out of order. Uh, the vendor six, so then the, the policy, and we don't have this on the back of the, uh, paper, the agenda, but it was 6460 vendor that we wanted to add verbiage to that policy that spoke to some number that we would want to be reported out to the board.
So we, uh, for the value of any gifts, donations, I don't know if there'd be any other thing other than those?
Okay. Um, and then, uh, bylaw 0152, uh, president. We wanted, and this is where I need more clarification. I stepped out to use the restroom. Um, this would be added to an operating manual.
Yes, we used the correct term this time.
Correct. But what I have incomplete is what we wanted to be added to the operating manual.
It would be what are the, what type of, uh, skills, prerequisites? What type of experience would we want to see for a person to run for the position of board president? Is it, is that a good summary?
Okay.
You're all stone-faced, not even a nod. Did I miss something on that one?
No, I think that's what we were talking about, like the board president's workshop and things like that. Would you want them to?
Okay, and then the one, uh, I'm sorry. And then the one that we just need more information is 01711 to 01714. Specifically, the, if the president were to vacate, then what, what does the school act say about that?
And it's not just that one, then it would be the, the remainders. That if the board is, is comfortable with the idea that we'd keep people in their roles if possible, except for the VP, how do we fill the vacant role if we're not automatically going to move everybody up?
Correct. All right, so we'll wait for guidance from the school act.
Organizational meeting? I think we skipped over that one. The, the idea is just, do we keep it in Ju- uh, January or do we switch it to June? And do we have, how do people feel, January, June? Uh, we had said that, we said at the least, why don't we hold off on it and kind of pay attention to what it might look like? And then maybe revisit it another year or so from now and decide if it makes sense to make the change.
I would like to be able to see what a, what a year or two would look like for that.
Like, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. So that one would not necessarily be any change at this point, but we do want to be paying attention to how that would impact things. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I, I believe that the Community College Act requires it in January. And I've looked at community colleges and they all have their election in January